All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. If we could please call roll.
Ms. Carasola?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. Parlamis?
Here.
Ms. Rundell? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Calvez?
Here.
Dr. Robinson?
Here.
You have a call.
All right, Mr. Hayward, are you able to lead us through the flag suit?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's too very serious. Thank you. In accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on January 7th, 2025. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the Borough Clerk and was posted on the Bulletin Board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. Ms. Stevenson, would you please read the mission statement?
Sure. The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you.
So first, we have a presentation where Dr. Daniel is going to be presenting some award winners to the board. Welcome, Dr. Daniel.
Good evening, everyone. A national merit finalist is a student who has demonstrated outstanding academic ability through their performance in the PSAT and has ranked among the top scorers in the nation, roughly 16,000 students. A finalist in the national merit competition refers to a student who has progressed past the semifinalist stage and is now considered one of the top contenders for the national merit scholarship competition. They have submitted additional application materials, like their transcripts, test scores, and personal essays, demonstrating a high-level academic achievement, along with a recommendation by the high school principal, Mrs. Girolando, to advance to the finalist round. We wish them the best of luck as they compete for one of approximately 8,000 national merit scholarships awarded from the pool of 16,000 finalists. They are Jeremy Bedwell Cole, Sophie He, and Ethan Zhang.
Well done for the three of you, and by all means, if you have other places to be tonight, we won't be offended if you step out at this point. This is a good time for you to exit if you'd like to go. All right, so I'll just be real brief with just my report. If you missed it, I know Ms. Calvez was there. We just watched the boys' basketball team win their second round in the division, in the bracket, which is great. The boys and girls both won on Thursday night, was it, or Tuesday, Wednesday? Friday? Last week. I'll clarify. Last week, it was good games, fun to watch them play, so good stuff. Just to give you a real quick update on everybody's favorite topic, and that is standardized testing. We have a variety of things going on or have just happened. We were selected by the federal government to do NAEP testing this year, so we just had that last week of a couple of grades. So that was done, is done. We have the WEADA testing for our multi-language learners. It's on two days. There was one in February, there'll be one in March. And then the next ones that are kind of the bigger ones that affect more people, the NJGPA, that's a graduation performance assessment, will be in March, on March 11th, and that's a junior, so we'll be taking that. So that'll probably disrupt some scheduling for a lot of high school kids on that week. So it's that whole week, starting on March 11th. And then springtime is when we get to NJSLA, which disrupts everybody's schedule, so it's equal opportunity there. So that's kind of where we're headed. We're headed into that time of the season where there's just a lot of those kinds of things. Final exams will be not too long after that. That's returned this year for the high school students, so that'll be a new experience for a lot of them, so we'll be working with them and supporting them through all that. I think that's about all I have to say. I have more to say about other things, but I'll do that under IMP.
Thank you very much. All right, on to the rest of our COW meeting. So for personnel, can I have a motion to discuss P1? Mr. Corey, seconded by Ms. Calvez, any discussion or questions or concerns about P1? All right, seeing none, can we call roll, please?
Ms. Carasola?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. Parlamis?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Calvez?
Yes.
Dr. Robbins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Just pulling something up. All right, perfect. On to policy, the review of policy and regulation regarding the PNR 7510. So with our policy, as you know, we're looking at the use of facilities or use of school facilities with regards to even the lights as well. So I'm opening up this discussion. I know that Sinead was unable to be here this evening, but she did send me some notes, being that she is also our trustee that serves on RAB. So I'm just going to read some of what she has. She said, "Everyone has the number for what it costs us to turn on the new lights. The old stadium light fee is currently about $100, and that might be not such a bad number," but she doesn't have a specific recommendation. And just so you kind of have an idea of what RAB is concerned about as members of our community, they want to make sure that our billing is aligned closer with whatever our intent is. Is it a fee per organization or per night, or just the fee for the night, which is split amongst, you know, however many people that want to use the field? They just want to have some sort of a clear communication or clear understanding of what that fee might be or how we decide to bill it. And will each field have a separate fee, or how much per field, or collectively if the fee is not separate? And will RAB specifically be charged for the lights? And that's really, that's it. I'm just part of the discussion. So are there any thoughts or questions? Yes.
Not on the fee, on the priority?
On the 7510 policy?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So two meetings ago, we agreed not to use the church or the political organization. We suggested different wording, so I just want to make sure that we will switch to that words.
I think that we were all in agreement.
Okay, because the draft, or I don't know if it's a draft or...
They must have uploaded, yeah.
Okay.
But we'll make sure that that change sticks.
Great, thank you.
I have a comment. We have all the listings for the fees that will be incurred for the different elements of the field. One thing I did not see was it's $200 for the use of the football field, multi-turf field, but I didn't know if that includes the, forgive me if I have the term wrong, the sports box field that we're building with the media, you know, if we're going to be using...
The press box?
The press box, thank you. If that includes the press box, or if there's an additional charge that would be incurred if we, you know, open the press box up for use. It's, I don't know if, you know, we want to...
I would understand that that's all up to this policy.
I am checking right now. I do believe that there's a separate charge.
Okay.
I didn't see a press box charge.
I don't see it.
It says here, "All field rates per hour, high school fields include the press box."
Okay, so it will include it.
It's in the current regulation.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other concerns, questions, comments?
Just to say, it looks like we have a clear fee for the use of the football field and the lower lacrosse field, and then a flat fee for lights, either whichever field they're working on. I think that's clean, it's clear. I think it's something they can budget with and understand, so I think it's good.
And it addresses all of these kinds of concerns that the RAB brought up? All right.
So I think the change that's needed, where it says, "All-purpose field lighting," we would say, "Either field light..."
Right.
...is 100.
Addition of lighting for a field, so it doesn't matter which field. Right. So they're separated.
So if one organization is using two fields, they would pay twice, is what you're saying?
Yes, 100%. That wording could be better.
What if we just down in stadium field, which is what is the upper field, and then just list the lower field separately, right?
Hold on, let me pull that up.
Yeah, maybe just match the wording below. Lower soccer, lacrosse, lighting, and football, multi-use field, lighting. Two lines. Made it longer.
So it's a fee per night?
Turn on the mic.
So if soccer has it from 7 to 8?
Lacrosse has it from 8 to 9. Are they both being charged to 100? I don't think we've addressed that part.
We haven't in the past, right, or we have? Did I read something, it was like, when you rent it, it's considered for a four-and-a-half-hour period?
How's the field?
So even if they're sharing it on the night, that's almost between them, not our problem? I think it would just complicate things for us.
Although I think they have to make separate reservations. They do because of their insurance reasons, but they are getting billed twice.
That is my understanding, that if soccer had the field from 5 to 7, and then lacrosse had it from 7 to 9, that both soccer and lacrosse would be billed.
And that's past practice?
Yes, if that's not the intent...
And be consistent with it.
We can certainly change that, but we just need some direction as to what the board would like.
But technically, if soccer reserved it from 5 to 9, they would get charged just 100, and it would just remain on after they left. So lacrosse would... Not bad. You give them, when you reserve the field, you give them the hours you'll be there. It's at a minimum of four hours when you turn on the lights.
Yeah.
Are both soccer and lacrosse part of RAB, part of one organization?
Well, no. RAB is just a body.
RAB is the governmental group that just, all the different associations are members of.
But they're all separate entities.
Where they go and argue with each other about details and fields.
And they can't like, charge RAB.
Right. Because I think that if one person, one entity rented it for the whole evening and then divided it between soccer and lacrosse, it would still just be one charge. But if two different entities do it, that's why I'm asking if RAB is the one making the reservation or if it's individual.
No, I understand it's individual.
It's all individual.
But I think it's also, our goal here is specifically just consistency of practice and co-firing.
It's probably better to keep it individual, because if you have one group only renting it later in the evening, or do you know if it's been rented earlier? There'd be all kind of tracking and figuring out you'd have to do if you did it that way. I mean, it's not...
Unless you say to have the lights on, I don't know. If the first in is the one who gets charged, which is, that's not right either. Because it's soccer every day, yeah.
Yeah.
Messy to write it as.
No, absolutely.
Okay. All right.
I think.
So with the exception of what Mr. Cohen mentioned, are there any other concerns with regards to the way that this is written? That sentence that you mentioned, which one was it again?
Two lines instead of one.
Which line was that?
Clarifying the lights and the green.
Okay. So we can make an update there and go from there?
And then the sentence is, it's $100 per organization?
What was it you suggested? Again?
It's kind of, it's vague. It says, "Per use."
Can you point me to the exact letter, just so I'm pulling it up? I have it in front of me.
It's on the last page of the regulation.
Okay. Yep, I have. I have the policy open, I just wanted to get to the exact.
Lights per use. The idea was just put two lines there, label them lacrosse and football.
Okay.
Per group, per reservation.
Yeah, per reservation, yeah.
Per reservation. That way, we don't have to track it, we don't have to, it's just clean.
Per reservation. Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions regarding 7510? All right, excellent. Part of...
So to wrap that up, we will have those changes in a draft for you at the COW next time, and then it'll be approved, I'm sorry, this is the COW. We'll have those, we're doing this, and then we'll have a free approval on the 17th. So that'll give us the two reasons.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else before I continue?
Nope.
Okay. With regards to old business, it's, so this is going to be the first, like, official discussion that we have with regards to the community request with the renaming policy. So just to kind of recap on what my suggestion was at the last meeting, I think that for an ask, you know, such as this, like, it would be great for us to have like, a consistent and known process. I had the opportunity to speak with Ms. McNabola, as well as another board member from our past, and they both had expressed that there were, you know, requests in the previous years, including one specifically for Mr. Hawkins to be recognized as part of a school. And there was a historical policy about like, renaming, but it wasn't like, it wasn't a policy that was like, kept. And so we don't really know where it went or how, oh, hi. We don't really know where it went or, you know, what it was, except that Ms. McNabola had mentioned that it was a general, like, maybe they just did things based on resolution, but there's not really a specific policy that we have. So Mr. Cohen was able to reach out through NJSBA channels, just to see if other schools were, had policies or were willing to share. And I forwarded the results of his request, and you have some sample policies in your email. What you'll see is like, a variety of policies. I think I have one of them. I'm just going to take a second here and pull it up. Thank you. One of the ones that caught my eye was the Jersey City policy, 7515 naming schools and facilities. I think that, you know, like, the goal of this discussion kind of is preliminarily to talk about some of the things that we're looking at with regards to creating a naming policy. Who should be making their request? Do we want it to be any member of the community, anybody that can make the request, any specifically staff or students, you know, things like that? We want to talk about what the process should be. So when you're looking through the variety of, I think these are pretty, pretty well-written, detailed policies, like, you know, thinking about the times, you know, what kind of community feedback that we might solicit depending on what it is. Are we naming a school? Are we naming a room, an auditorium, a, you know, a classroom? Like, who can make the request, things like that? So that's really where I'm looking at us having this discussion about. Are there any thoughts? I know we've had a couple of weeks now to sit with just kind of like, some of the, you know, preliminary community feedback that we've received, and having our own thoughts and reading a little bit. But what are your thoughts in terms of where you would want to go with this? If any.
I think our job is setting policy, so really, it's not exciting, but that's what we do. So setting the groundwork, the framework for how we even approach this is our job. So thanks for putting this on the platform for us to dig into, and there might be other exciting or noteworthy things, and we set a framework to be able to handle that going forward, so let's keep pushing that.
Yeah. And I do want to, you know, convey, thanks to, you know, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Cole, for highlighting a member of our community. I think that it's important for us to know our history. Additionally, I know that there's many, many, like, exceptional members of our community as well. And so I want to make sure that when we're evaluating any of these policies and making, you know, long-term changes, that we're getting adequate feedback from the community before we do that. And creating a policy around a process for something as important as like, naming of a school or parts of the school would help us to make sure that, you know, we had a majority support in order to do this. So what I'll ask is that you take a look at the policies, and when we come back to our next COW meeting, if you're able to highlight and/or make some suggestions for how we would craft our policy, what are parts of these policies that you would like to see in our policy? And then I will compile all of the suggestions, we'll have a discussion about those elements, and then make, you know, make a decision amongst each other, and then I'll compile all of that into a draft policy, and then we'll take a look at that draft at the following COW meeting. All right. Any questions about that?
No questions, but thank you for doing the like work and for getting us the policies to guide our decisions. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right, anything else on policy? All right, on to governance. Anybody have anything for governance?
I do.
Thank you.
So I added something just recently because there are deadlines that we have to meet. So the state requires every district to have a comprehensive equity plan. Every three years, we do a needs assessment to make sure that everything is accessible, handicap accessible, and so forth. They have, we have not done it in more than three years because the state was working on revising the process, so we just kept doing, signing off SOAs, understanding that we're following our last one. They finally have gotten it together, so we have a new SO, sorry, a new comprehensive equity plan deadline, which is June 23rd, so working backwards from there. The way it goes through is that the affirmative action officer, that's me, and my affirmative action team will do a needs assessment to make sure facilities and all of our policies and everything is up to snuff. It is due on June 23rd, so we have to, we have to do that before that, our board meeting before that, we have a board meeting on the 23rd, that's not going to work for us, so it'll be May 19th that we need to do that. So we will ask you to, there'll be three resolutions that you're going to be doing over the next few months. One, next time, is to authorize me and my affirmative action team to do the needs assessment. Then you will authorize the submission of that in May, and then you will also appoint next year's affirmative action officer, me, and my affirmative action team again for the following year. So all three of those resolutions have to be done by May 19th. So I'm mentioning it now because March 17th, you're going to be voting to authorize me to do the needs assessment. So that's it. Like I said, it's an every-three-year, and then there's a statement of understanding every year that says we're continuing to follow it. If we find anything that's non-compliant, we have to then create a plan over those three years to remedy it. So an example of which would be, in my last district, when I was going through the same thing as the AAL, we, during our needs assessment, found that in the, there's a coaches locker room that they used for referees specifically, and there was a women's one and a men's one. The women's one did not have a shower, and they had to like, use the women's coaches, and it was like, not equitable, right? So we remedied that when we were doing some other construction. So things like that. So we, there's a big checklist, and we did it probably four or five years ago, and we'll build off of that, and we'll be fine, so no problems.
All right. Any questions about that item?
Exciting stuff.
Thank you. Onto IMP.
IMP, so I have a number of things for you. Kindergarten registration opens today. I was talking with our registrar at the end of the day, and I think she said, was it 67 or 66 people have signed up already, which is typical for the first day. So that should be fine. She had a few in person, but most of them were via email. Everything looks good. I do want to mention to the board right now that we just, actually today, or maybe it was Friday, got a request from a staff member requesting to register her kindergartner for next year, a teaching staff member, it matters. So the response that I gave her was the same that we gave to somebody last year at this time, which is that the board won't commit to that until we know what the kindergarten numbers are before we let in out of district people. And that we will let her know, and that'll probably be end of June is when that will happen. So I communicated that to her, she's fine with that, just, but I wanted to put it on your radar. Early childhood program registration is going to open on March 12th. We were, I was down there this morning, place is looking great. The floors are down, the walls are just about done, the cubbies are in, the bathrooms look great, they're still doing some work, but there, it looks really good. Looks really sharp, very bright, very nice, very, very modern. So the registration will open at 12 noon, it'll be a Google form that people can sign up for. It will be, as we discussed, kind of first, it'll be first come, first served, so in order of people registering, starting at noon, and when it fills, you know, that's what it is. So we will have X number of students that we're letting in, we will communicate to them, "You made it, and here is a registration packet." And that packet will include all of the stuff that you need to register your kid for school, you've seen them all, if you've had kids in school. And also, at that point, we'll ask them to pay the $75 registration fee to hold their spot. So we'll give them a deadline for that. If they don't have the registration paperwork and the paper, and the deposit by that deadline, then we'll move to the next person on the list, which seems to be a fair way. We're hoping to do an open house to tour the facility. It won't be 100% done, you know, with all of the materials, right? But hopefully, the furniture will be in, and it'll be nice. So we're hoping to do an open house facility tour this spring, as soon as we can, because I know parents are going to want to see it. Anyway, moving right along with that.
Yep. Would we be able to, like, when would be a good time for us to be able to take a tour of the facility?
We would have to coordinate with construction on that, so let me get back to you on that, and we'll find a place, maybe a time before board meeting again, or right after.
Yeah, just let us know when is a good time, when you think it is. Thank you.
Yep, we'll look into that. Okay, sixth grade physical education in recess. So a couple of things that are going on here. The first is, we offer for all of our middle school kids recess every day, which a lot of middle schools don't, or at least some middle schools don't. We believe in movement, we believe in taking a break, we believe in all of those things. We also know that that recess requirement meets our state mandated minutes of physical education, because in the middle school, not all kids have health or phys ed every marking period. But we can do that because we have recess also. We have to write a recess curriculum for that. So we'll write a recess curriculum this summer to make sure that everything is set for that. So that's the first, second half of it. The first half is, we have an opportunity because of staffing to offer an elective course, we're going to offer it to sixth grade only, because that's where I think we have the most need. We're going to call it Healthy Bodies and Healthy Minds. So currently, as you know, sixth graders don't have any elective choices, right? They take all the same classes. In seventh and eighth, they start to gain some choices. This would allow them to have a little bit of choice. So not everybody will want this, not everybody will take this, but they have a little bit of choice. The Healthy Bodies, Healthy Minds elective is going to be a course to promote overall well-being by focusing on both physical fitness and mental health. They'll engage in fun, interactive activities, strength, coordination, conditioning, emphasize the connection between physical activity. the connection between physical activity and mental clarity, et cetera, et cetera. It's going to be a quarterly course that kids can take. We think it'd be nice for them. We think some kids are really going to like this and, and give, give kids an opportunity to get them some, some sample lessons that we'll be looking at, stretching and flexibility training, hydration and mental clarity, mindful meditation, breath work, relaxation, mindful yoga, group fitness challenge, things like that. So we're working on, we'll, we'll work on the curriculum and flush it out this summer also to make that happen. But we wanted to, to get that out there now because we'll be sending that information out to students when their sixth graders are getting their chance to choose classes, because right now they don't get to choose classes. So it'll be, it'll be a new thing we're adding to it. So want to let you all know about that. And then I want to give you, last thing is an update on CONMEGO. It's been a little, it's taken longer to set it up than we intended, but sometimes technology goes that way, right? It's where we are. But we're, here's our timeline. So teachers and students are going to have access to it on March 5th, which is Wednesday. March 11th, we're doing some training for teachers. And then March 24th, teachers are going to start using the program with students that aligns with both our trimester three break from two to three in the elementary level and the end of marking period three at the middle school, high school. This is again, we're doing some classes in fifth grade and then Algebra I. I don't have the list of all the classes in front of me. I know language arts, I know English up at the ninth grade. So we're kind of doing a variety of different grades up there to see, see how this works out. And as a reminder, it's real-time AI-powered tutoring and scaffolding. We're hoping it's going to assist teachers in identifying learning gaps, providing targeted interventions. We're hoping to support enrichment opportunities for students who are ready for advanced challenges and help teachers track student progress and personalize learning experiences more effectively. We see this as an opportunity, right? AI is, is this thing that people are, are trying to explore. How do we capture the, the power of it for our instruction and for our, working with our students? And also it fits really nicely with our MTSS work that we're doing to try and fill in gaps and, and those things. So you should be seeing and hearing about it very soon, coming from students and teachers. And I think that's it for instruction program.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Van Ness regarding any of these initiatives? All right. Thank you very much. If no other items for IMP, then we can move on to special services.
We added on here what Ms. Caracello reminded us of last time, or last time, last Cal anyway, which is that CPAC on March 6th, that's Wednesday this week, Thursday this week? Which day is, Thursday, I think?
Yep.
Thursday. Thursday this week, thank you. Seven o'clock at the middle school, high school media center, the group Hearts and Hands is coming in to do a presentation called Who Are the Helpers? So all are invited. They request that you register. I know that that information has gone out on social media and various other email things, but I just want to remind folks that, that that's happening on Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you. And are, are many of you able to go, you think? I know, I, I know I can't, so.
I'm planning on going. I, I just may be a little late, but my intention is to be there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
I'm sorry. I actually wanted to attend, but I'm traveling that day out of, out of state, so I won't be able to make it. So thanks for representing.
Thank you. We look forward to like hearing back, because I know that it's not going to be videotaped. So if you're able to take notes for us so that we can see what ways we can support CPAC. Onto anything from management, community? Any, I guess this would be a good place if you wanted to update with regards to anything community.
Sure. So we had our first meeting of the Community Relations Ad Hoc Committee about, I was on Valentine's Day on the 14th. We have a student representative, Campbell Hudson, who's our, Hudson Campbell, sorry, who is our student rep at our board meetings. And then it's Mr. Boaz, myself, Ms. Pr, Ms. Pr, I always want to say Calister, I'm so sorry.
Perlamis.
Perlamis. And our president, Dr. Robinson. And we were also joined by Mr. Van Ness. It was a great meeting. I think we all know it's a, it's a very big topic, community relations. We've found that there's going to be a lot of opportunity, which is great. We did, I have some notes, we'll put them in, I believe there's a folder for liaisons, if we can put it there, if I send it to you. Great. We did kind of settle on a, a mission. So it's going to be the mission of the Glen Rock Public Schools Board of Ed Community Relations Committees to foster inclusive collaborative communication between the school board and all stakeholders, including students, parents, educators, and community members. We're committed to maintaining strong, positive relationships by ensuring the voices of all stakeholders are heard and information, along with opportunities for involvement, is available to all. So we're going to basically take everything that we're doing and hold it up to that mission. We had lots of ideas that we are going to dive into more at our next meeting, including looking at our website numbers, our social media metrics, see where people are going, where they're going right now for information, kind of see what kind of story we can see what they're looking for, just get those general visitorship and read rates. We definitely want to tackle some kind of fact fiction webpage, just a way to address the misinformation that we all see and get frustrated with. So that's going to be one of our priorities. Other ideas, really, we kind of just threw up there, but we haven't really explored yet, but there'll be listening sessions, family subject nights, shared, special shared mailbox perhaps, some talking points on hot topics for us, maybe even as we go into our liaison meetings. Definitely, I think Mr. Bo, Cohen talked about promoting the chain of command at the last meeting. We want to get that out there more, the escalation process. And then we want to be visible at various school events. So I'll be working on some kind of calendar that I'll push out to you guys, hopefully once a month that says, hey, these are some of the things happening. Get out there. Maybe even brand us a little bit, get some shirts or something that we would purchase ourselves, but something that would kind of identify us as a board member. All right. We, we identified our potential partners and our next steps, again, talked a little bit about them with the metrics that we're looking at. Hudson had a fantastic idea. The, there's a principal advisory group, I guess all the grades at the middle school and high school, or maybe just the high school, meet with the principal. It's an advisory group. And sometimes conversations there will get to a point where like, oh, that's a board decision. And then it kind of like dies out. So he's going to go and present to all those groups and say, hey, I'm here, I'm your rep. If you have an item like that, bring it to me and then I'll bring it here. So in addition to hearing about all those creative, you know, he shares with us kind of what's happening, we can also learn what the, what's on the minds of the students, what they're bringing up at these meetings that maybe the, the principal can't move forward. So he's going to be doing that, which is great. We're also going to be looking at other district websites, seeing how they solicit questions and feedback, also some of the top brands, see if they have kind of chat functions they have. We're going to make sure we measure all of our efforts so we can show our return on effort. And just, we are also, this is for all of us, we're going to start a document that kind of tracks concerns that we're hearing or opportunities for deeper communication. So if you hear, I don't know, there's a big hole in the field, I don't know, it's a bad example. I don't want to do math, okay? I'll see the elephant in the room. Math, people are, you know, upset about it. We'll put it on that document so that we can say, hey, what, what can we do? How can we communicate? How can we build a bridge to the community on this specific topic? We want to make sure that we keep that as a living document and we want feedback from everyone for that. We're going to invite our community, or our communications rep, Tara, to our next meeting. And that's about it. I think we're meeting on March 21st. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
You guys would add?
You are very thorough. I have nothing to add.
Yeah. So it's very early. We're, we're super excited. Again, we were, we could have met for hours. We, we had to kind of call it a, it's a Friday. But we have a great committee and I think a lot of great momentum to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just add, make a, I wasn't there, but can I make a suggestion?
No. Of course. No, please do. So just so you know, this is a new, you know, the ad hoc committee is definitely new for myself. So please, and that's why we're hoping to get the, the notes on the shared drive.
It's not even my idea. Some time back, a resident emailed us, because I know sometimes it's frustrating when you come to a board meeting, especially when you're on the other side, you have questions, and it's not a back and forth, it's not a chance to have questions answered. And in her email, she had suggested maybe after a meeting, you know, the person who comes up and asks a question may get the answer, but once the question's out there, there may be other people who were curious to the answer. She had suggested making a video, but that might be a lot to ask. But could we maybe after a board meeting, if there are questions, just have something on the website, cue questions from the last board meeting and have somebody craft an answer to put on the website? So at some point, there's an answer given. I mean, I know when the resident emailed that, I thought it was a, it was a.
Like instead of a frequently asked question, have like a board asked question and then have the answer.
Right. Right.
What I did not mention in my thing was that we also talked about doing a board highlights email again, returning to that. It was something that Dr. Charleston did, but we said maybe it's something that we can take on. And that would be great, putting a section there about what we heard from the community to address those kinds of things that come in.
Right. Because I'm the person who asks a question, get the answer, but there may be others in the community that don't, don't know it. So I just, more ways to get information. And that came from a community member. I just thought it was really very, it was a good idea.
Thank you.
It's like Stephanie picked it right out of my head. I was like, that, that's what we should do. Okay, great. Thank you. And then actually, oh, just, because, one second, I'll just finish this up. At the last meeting, we were talking about some sort of reply form. Is there a way that we can inquire about, like, an auto reply on, like, when someone from, sends a board of ed an email, just kind of like a, I'll, I'll share, I'll share it with you, like, the email that we, like, the form that we received? And if there was something that we could, like, make, like Glen Rock worthy, so that whoever, just so that it's on, like, for my, the president's email, whoever is the president, then it would bounce back to the individual saying like, okay, like, just, you know, we've acknowledged receipt of your email. This is like the chain of command, you know, like, in terms of the common ways for you to resolve. We'll get back to you. You know, is that something that we can investigate, like, if there's a possibility?
I know that we can do an auto response, like a vacation response for an individual. I don't know if Gmail allows us to do it from however we have GRBOE set up. I don't know, but I can all look into it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how it goes. Did you have something?
No, we're going to cover it.
Oh, okay. All right. Onto business and fiscal management. Yay, state aid.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So state aid came out last week. We're very happy to report that we received a 3% increase in state aid. What that will allow us to do is to reinstate some of the items that we had cut in our first round of the budget. So we're excited to do that. We will continue to do that through the end of this week and, and next and be ready with the tentative budget motions for the board on the meeting of the 17th. And just to, you know, elaborate on that, that is merely the board giving the, the district the approval to submit our budget to the county, for the county to review the budget. The other thing that we have been working on is back in the fall, if you remember, we had a motion to use competitive contracting for the solicitation of RFPs for both paraprofessionals and substitute teachers. We have, we are very close to having final documents for both. We're going to start with our paraprofessionals and have that request go out first and then probably follow, you know, two or three weeks later with substitutes. And hopefully by our May meeting, we will be in a position to award for both. As far as some new business items, the Booster Club is donating a, would like to donate, a new scoreboard for the lower field. It's at a cost of the scoreboard plus installation of about $14,000. It is, we've seen some drawings of it. It's quite tactful. It'll be, it'll be a great addition to the field. And so we'll have that on our next action meeting for the board to accept the donation of the scoreboard and the installation. And that wraps up fiscal management. I went out of order, I'm sorry. And under operations, so if you remember, when we did the preschool project, it was broken up into really two phases. There was a demolition phase and then the construction phase. So what we will have in front of you at the next meeting is a credit change order, which would represent the money that we, that the contractor came in under his amount for the demolition piece. It's in the amount of $54,363.62. So that will be on the next agenda and then that money will eventually be closed back into our capital reserve for future projects. And that is all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Canelos. Really appreciative of that and also that amazing Booster Club donation. So that's, that's really amazing and we're thankful for the support of our community for that. Any other questions or comments? All right. Any other liaison business? I think that's, yes, Ms. Perlamis.
I'm a liaison to the Hamilton School and I just wanted to give a little report on the Hamilton. We're moved on to this.
Yes. We're good.
So the Hamilton School has three exciting things this week. They have the Read Across America. They also have, which I was involved, I remember back when my daughter was in first grade and now she's in 12th, the multicultural festival. So they're having their 12th annual multicultural festival. And I think I counted like almost 30 countries happening, so that's very exciting. And then they're also doing a first night's kits program, which they're having, the fifth graders are collecting care products, personal care items, and then they're organizing that and handing them out at shelters for their first night, when people go to a shelter for their first night in the shelter stay. So kudos to all the kids over there at Hamilton for their efforts and for all the exciting stuff happening.
Wow. Thank you so much, Ms. Perlamis. All right. So seeing no additional items, our next meeting is set for March 17th. We'll probably begin closed session at 6:00, most likely, but more to follow. All right. Can I have the beginning of public, public comments at 7:53? We can open it up. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes. Okay? Okay. All right.
Can you say something about Read Across America?
I was saying, the Hamilton Elementary School was having this week, it's their, it's not Read Across America, yeah, it is Read Across America. They're having a different theme every day where the kids do something to focus on reading.
Just came up with Read Across America. Right? Found it to be a better word. We're going to say goodbye.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll close public comments, 7:54. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All right. A member of the community, oh, sorry, Ms. Calvez, and then seconded by Mr. Hayward.